Tell me. Where you get there? Or fifty fifty, maybe, because you get down there and then the weather. And you never know how the weather is going to be, so you won't be able to.
Did you talk to him?
Uh-uh. He, did he go down?
He went there. Interesting.
Was he, was he get off, onto the ice?
It's interesting.
So you were there in two thousand and three. I was here in Yakima, right? Training and we were in the middle of the desert.
Welcome to a the Wednesday, March twentieth meeting of the Lakewood Planning Commission. Mr. Devro, would you please call row?
Philip Combs.
Present.
Lynn Larson is absent at this time. Mark Hare.
Present.
Philip Lindholm.
Present.
Ellen Talbo.
Present.
Sharon Wallace is excused. You do have quorum chair.
Thank you. Y'all had a chance to look at the minutes that were provided to you online. Were there any comments, questions, additions, corrections to the minutes? I mean, none, I'll ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Herb, motion. Excuse me. And Mr. Lindholm, second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Do we have any updates to today's minutes? Got me in the agenda?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And we have no public comment at this time. I see no one and no, I didn't get a sheet.
Correct.
And we have no public hearings at this time either. And we have, we do not have unfinished business. We have no, no, no. But we do have new business. So Ms. Spear, if you will, please introduce.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. So we actually have a guest, we have two guest presenters tonight, but our first is online. Her name is Alyssa Wilbur and she is with ICLI, who is an organi-, or that is an organization that works with local governments regarding climate change preparation and regulation and tracking. So Alyssa, let me know if you'd like me to run your slides just as part of the package, or if you would like to do it yourself from your side.
Hi, it's good to, oh, I don't have a camera on, it looks like, but I'm-
For some reason, we're not hearing you, Alyssa.
Yeah, I can hear you and I don't have, there we go.
Alyssa, can you try speaking again, see if that helps bringing you on as a panelist?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
No.
No. It, it registers me speaking.
To go to part two first?
Yeah, we're gonna switch order. So Alyssa, if you wouldn't mind, we're gonna have our other presentation first, which is our own City of Lakewood, Jeff Gum, the Housing Programs Manager. And his presentation is here if you want, or I can walk you through it.
Here it works.
Okay, so you just need to share.
All right. So, actually, you know what, you can, you can jump.
Okay.
Probably be easier.
All right.
So, good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Jeff Gum, the Housing Division Manager here at the City of Lakewood, manage a bunch of different housing programs. One of them is kind of what I'm here to talk about tonight, CDBG and Home Programs. So the city is a federal entitlement. I'm getting your, your thing catching.
Catchy, it's catchy.
So the, the city is an entitlement community. We are awarded Community Development Block Grants through HUD on an annual basis. And we participate for home funds, which is home, home program through HUD as well as part of a consortium with the City of Tacoma. So, right now, we're in our planning process moving forward for fiscal year two thousand and twenty fours, planning for those two funds, CDBG and Home. So the, the planning process, actually, if you want to throw the next slide up-
Yeah, give me just a second.
Perfect.
All right.
That's okay. So the, the planning process is something that involves a couple of different steps. So we, every five years as a city, create what's called the five-year consolidated plan. And the five-year consolidated plan looks at your overall community. It looks at the need in the community. It looks at resources, community-wide, not necessarily only CDBG and Home, but any, any community resources that can be used to benefit low and moderate in, in income individuals in the City of Lakewood. So the, the two programs, CDBG and Home, that is their primary benefit is low and moderate income individuals. And the City of Lakewood, we do have some of those. We're about fifty-two percent population is low and moderate income individuals. So it's a, it's a program that is fairly well prescribed to, and it does take some, being a, a federal program, it takes a lot of bureaucratic red tape, which some of the council members say is my favorite thing to do, and I'm not sure it is anymore, but after twenty-two years of, of dealing with HUD, I think we've got it down a little bit here. So again, this is the annual process that we're looking to do, and this is allocating against CDBG and Home. It's for the program year that starts July first, two thousand and twenty-four, and it runs through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. So every year, you've kind of got a process where you're allocating next year's funds and you're working on closing out this year's funds, and it's just kind of a continual circle. So the, the process that we're doing now, it, it starts with a couple of different public input processes. There's one required at the start of the plan, which is where we're at now. I did hold a public hearing prior to bring, bringing it to you all here through the Community Services Advisory Board on February twenty-first. We do a, a lot of publication in TNT, local, local, different resources that we have. We put it up on the city website. It goes for, for Twitter or goes through Twitter, all of the different things that we use for our, our resources here at the City of Lakewood. It gets posted on our, our website. And then we seek public input from just a, a number of different boards, city staff, other city staffs, City of Tacoma, City of, of of Puyallup, just a bunch of, a bunch of different individuals that I've worked with over the years. Pierce County is a, has a fairly large part in this as well. It's, it's supposed to be a regional approach. So if we're developing affordable housing, we like to look on a regional basis. I can do it, I guess, if you want, whatever. We'll throw it back, so.
Mr. Gum, would it be okay with you if we asked questions as you went along?
Oh, yeah. At any point in time, I mean, feel free to jump in. It's, it's kind of a convoluted process and I guarantee you'll have questions. I still have questions.
We can't answer it.
So, yeah, it's, again, we're, we're in the, in the first year, we're in the last year of our five-year plan. So the current five-year plan that we started, it was in two thousand and twenty, and it runs through two thousand and twenty, twenty-four. So we're kind of closing out our five-year plan. In the next two months, we're gonna be starting on the next five-year plan. So we're, we're putting together this, the annual action plan now, and about three or four months from now, we'll start on the next five-year plan and the next annual action plan, and we just keep rolling through. Again, so the, the, the public input that we look for is, again, it's, it's a very wide net that we cast and try and capture anybody in the City of Lakewood, providers, local governments, any organizations that are providing services as, as well as advisory boards. So there's the, again, the two programs, there's CDBG and there's Home. So CDBG, again, we're benefiting low and moderate income individuals, and CDBG has, has three goals. It's either to provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, or expanded economic opportunities. This coming year for our budget, the House and Senate did just pass, I think last Wednesday or Thursday, a many-bus bill, which included T-HUD. And the T-HUD bill was pretty close to what it was last year. There was, there was definitely some cuts. CDBG was funded at the exact, the exact same level as it was in two thousand and twenty-three, which was about three point three five trillion dollars. The Home Program was actually cut from a hundred and fifty billion to a hundred and twenty-five billion. So fairly significant cut in Home, but CDBG, we do expect to be about the same. Last year, we received five hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars in CDBG funds. This year, I'm proposing we get about five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. It usually takes HUD about sixty to ninety days to get from budget approval at the congressional level to the local jurisdictional level, running it through the, their program formula allocation. So we don't quite know what it is. We anticipate probably in June, we'll have those numbers.
You said T-HUD versus HUD?
Yeah, the, the bill that, that goes through Congress is transportation and, and housing and urban development. They put them together because I think they just like the acronym T-HUD, I don't know. They, they have a bunch of different things. But, uh, so the, the other program is the, the Home Program. And again, it was, it was cut significantly this year. And last year, we received just over three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. I anticipate about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars this year. And Home is, has one purpose and one purpose only, is to create affordable housing. So affordable housing can be created, well, we'll go through that slide here in a minute. But CDBG, again, eligible activities, there's, there's three different things that they're looking to do, and then there's a number of activities that can be accomplished under CDBG. So CDBG is, it's kind of a, it's, it's a nicer program than Home. It gives you a lot of different things that you can do with it. Jurisdictions typically use it for affordable housing or infrastructure. By and large, those are the two primary activities nationwide. They're kind of the primary activities for the City of Lakewood over the historical term that we've been allocated funds, started in two thousand. That'll be later in one of the slides, but eligible activities for CDBG, again, you've got affordable housing. And affordable housing is, for the most part, it's, it's rehabilitation programs, it's down payment assistance. We can acquire land and, and sell them to an affordable housing developer to develop the land. There's public services, and public services are just that. So anything that's a, a human services-related activity, so childcare, healthcare, community services, community facilities, just, just about anything you can think of qualifies as a public service. One thing that, that CDBG does restrict is fifteen percent of your allocation is the cap for public services. So they, they're trying to kind of direct their activities more towards affordable housing and infrastructure and economic development is what they're really looking for. And then public facilities and infrastructure, again, it's, it's infrastructure, so it's roads, streets, sidewalks. If we're doing a public facility, say a community center, we can, we can construct some of those things. Years ago, we constructed like the Hope Mill Guard Center was one of the things that we invested in, in the City of Lakewood here, so. Economic development is another activity and it's, it's primary, primarily directed to creating and retaining jobs. So you're helping a business that's a, a low-income owner of a business to either start his business or a non-low-income owner of a business to hire low-income individuals. So there's, there's some, there are some outcomes that are required if, if you do those. Most cities don't focus a heck of a lot on economic development. It tends to, it tends to have a lot of paperwork and the, the businesses related don't really like to do all the paperwork. I mean, they're, they're interested in moving a lot quicker than we are at the federal level, so.
But we did, didn't we?
We have, yeah, we have done a few things in years past. A lot of our funding was through like the CARES Act and so forth. We were, we were giving monies for, for retaining employees. Years ago, we tried some facade improvements and had some kind of checkered good luck here and, and a few things worked out. But it, it's, by and large, it's not a, it's not a program that we do a lot of. We, we do loan monies to other businesses in years past. We have loaned monies to other businesses in the past to bring businesses here. So Curbside Motors was one of the projects that we loaned seven hundred and ten thousand dollars for to bring their auto dealership here, which most people think used deal, used auto dealers. I mean, y'all know what you think of when, when somebody says, hey, you're a used car guy. But Curbside was kind of a cool deal. It's, they're, they're a very, very large dealership in the fact that they move a lot of cars. So I believe in the, in the used car industry, they were, they're in the top fifteen or twenty statewide, the number of, of autos that they move. So it was kind of a, a coup for us to bring them from Tacoma to Lakewood, so we were happy to do that.
How, how did Lhasa fit in?
Yeah, and we did the same as with Lhasa with some loans. We loaned them three hundred and ten thousand dollars in two thousand and fourteen to develop their, their services for center that is here now and the fifteen units of affordable housing. So we were able to, to loan them monies and partner up with some of our CDBG and Home Funds as well as with Pierce County to get that done. So, and, and another thing that we're doing now is the Lhasa's new construction. Twenty-five units of affordable housing is something they're looking to develop, so we're allocating them Home Funds. There's some Home ARP Funds in there, there's some ARP Funds. Pierce County is giving them money, the, they've got Housing Trust Fund. It's typically anything that we do, whether it's CDBG or Home, it's not a go-alone activity. I mean, it's whatever we're doing, we're partnering with either the state or we're partnering with the county or the City of Tacoma. It's, it's, it's usually a fairly large lift in the, in the way of funding a project, so kind of hard to do them by yourself anymore.
And the entity can, 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 you can apply for both?
Yes.
And be provided both?
Yeah, and, and some activities will qualify for both, depending on what you're doing. Of like, if, like Lhasa, in their instance, they were, they were developing a services center, they were developing affordable housing, so we used Home for the affordable housing. We use CDBG for the services. And then we had a Section one oh eight business loan that we used for the, the entire project as well to kind of get it done.
Mr. Gum, one pointed clarity question. This money's granted in from the federal level, and then you said we were loaning it out. So when those funds are returned back to the city with interest, I'm assuming, do they just go into the general fund? Or where does that money end up?
So they're, they're their own funds, so we have to track them separately. So any federal funds have to come through and, and be tracked on their own, in essence. So we have two different funds. There's a CDBG fund and then there's a Home Fund. And all of the funds, when we get them back, they typically go into a revolving loan fund for that fund. So CDBG funds go into the CDBG revolving loan fund and Home go into the Home revolving loan fund. And then those are used for similar activities. So if, if you're loaning out, say for homeowner rehabilitation, which we do a lot of, homeowners pay us back over time. Typically, it's a, it's either a zero percent or a one percent loan. Those numbers may change as if interest rates continue to stay high, we may, we may raise them up a little bit. But the, the purpose of the program obviously is to allow somebody who can't afford a, a market rate loan to maintain their home. So when we get those back, we, we roll them into the revolving loan fund, and then those are again used for additional housing rehabs or Section one oh eight loans or whatever they're paying us back.
But then at the, for the city, then we have kind of a, a balance sheet account that's constantly growing for this program to be executed over time?
We do. Yeah, we do. The, the CDBG program for major home repair has about two point five million dollars in outstanding loans. And Home, we have a Home Rehabilitation Program that's got about three million dollars in outstanding funds. And as well as there's this, a Section one oh eight account, so that has about a million dollars in, in Section one oh eight funds that are being paid back. There's a few other smaller loan funds as well, but there's some of the affordable housing funds when we've loaned Lhasa money. Some of those are, are loans that we'll get back in the future as well.
Thank you.
Okay, please.
All right. So eligible home activities, again, Home is just to support affordable housing. So by and large, Home is used for either single-family homeowner rehabs, single-family homeowner construction, like we've done a lot with Habitat over the years. So we loan our monies to Habitat, they build the houses, we pass those along to the homeowners who then assume the, the loans and pay us back when they sell their houses down the road. We, and we also do a lot of, of, well, not as much as we used to in the past, but we do a lot of new construction. So like a Lhasa rental housing project. But we don't, we don't, again, it's kind of hard to do these on our own when you're dealing with three hundred thousand dollar on average. It takes us two or three years to save up to actually commit to a project. And then I have to beg Pierce County and Tacoma to, to kind of go along with us and the state to get in involved and, and this, the Lhasa project, we were, we were very good at, at partnering. So we were, we threw in about three million dollars out of a ten point five million dollar construction project for Lhasa. And all the, all the other funds are grants through the state, the feds, and the county, so.
Excuse me, I, clarification. I thought that with Habitat for Humanity, that they were the lender. Are you saying that the city is the lender?
There's, there's actually two lenders in, in those, actually, there's three lenders in those projects. So usually what happens is Habitat's building a house that, that costs them about, used to be about two hundred and seventy-five, now it's probably about three hundred and fifty thousand to build. So what happens is when they build the house, we loan them monies to, to use for development as well as down payment assistance for the homeowner. So we're funding the, the final homeowner at the end with a down payment loan. The, the person buying the house has to go out and get a conventional loan to pay off Habitat. But they usually can't get a loan, I mean, if, if they're buying houses four hundred thousand dollars, typically with their income, they're only gonna qualify for two hundred thousand dollars. So our down payment subsidizes that, drops it down. Habitat then subsidizes the rest of it in a, in a, usually a third. So there's usually a, a conventional loan at first, there's usually us at second, and then there's Habitat at third, just to get them to an affordability level that they can actually afford.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any timeframes in which they have to pay those loans back?
Our loans are typically twenty years. They could go out to thirty years, but we typically do a twenty-year loan. Every once in a while, we'll do thirty-year loans, depending on, we try and partner with, I mean, if a commercial lender's gonna go longer, then we try and, we try and make ours match, so. But it, it is nice to try and get our monies back sooner than later. Wait, with Habitat, we've only had, I think, one homeowner and we've been doing them since two thousand, one homeowner who's paid us back because they're all still in their houses.
Yeah.
So it's, it's really hard when you, when you've got a, literally an ultra-subsidized loan and you're paying nine hundred dollars a month, you can't really sell that house and buy another one. Because if they do, they have to pay us back, they have to pay Habitat back and the conventional loan. So by the time they leave the house, I mean, they're gonna make fifty, sixty thousand dollars, but if you roll that into a new house at five hundred thousand dollars, they can't afford it, so.
But I imagine their interest rates are pretty attractive. They probably don't want to get rid of those, is that right?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, and, and most of our Habitat loans, those, those are typically a one percent loan. So we're, we're accruing some interest and then we roll those back into future Habitat projects. So for low-income individuals in the City of Lakewood, there's a, a different level depending on household size. So you can see in the slide, up to eight household members what would qualify as low income. So that's the area median income for the City of Lakewood. I think the, I think the median income for Lakewood is fifty-six thousand and change. I forget the number off the top of my head. So the planning process that we go through, it's a, again, there's two, two processes. There's a five-year plan and then there's the annual action plan. So the, the five-year plan that we start with is kind of the, the umbrella plan. And that is developed, again, we're in the last year of the plan, we're gonna start our next one in July. That's, that's kind of sets us up for the primary goals that the city's looking to accomplish. We usually start this process in July, it runs through about May. There's a, a lot of public input, there's a lot of demographics and a lot of input that we, we get, not only through HUD, but the American Community Surveys. We do a lot of public outreach. I mean, all of that kind of develops that plan. And, and it is looking, again, you're, you're developing a plan to meet housing and community development needs in the City of Lakewood, and you're looking at what, what you have for resources to kind of get that done. And then prioritizing goals over your five years that you're gonna meet. And then from that, each and every year, you're gonna develop an annual action plan. And so the annual action plan says, okay, this year, we've got a goal of, if it's fifty units of affordable housing, we're looking to develop this year, we're gonna develop twenty-five of them, and we're gonna do X, Y, and Z. And it's, it, it kind of works under the five-year plan to get you to hopefully your, your five-year goals. And again, those processes are, are marked with a bunch of public input, a lot of public outreach and a lot of, a lot of paperwork. It's, I wish it wasn't, but we don't do as, quite as much as, as Tiffany has to do with, with her five-year consolidated process, but so this is a, an annual timeline for CDBG and Home. And again, this is kind of a, an ongoing thing. It's, it's not really necessarily a linear approach. There's always something kind of jumping you forward and jumping you back to, to work in this year and work in last year, sort of a thing. So we typically, the, the current year starts in July. From that, this year, and this is, I've kind of tailored this to where we're at right now, working towards the five-year plan. So again, in July and August, we're gonna start working on hiring a consultant to help us out with the five-year plan. From that point in time, we start in September and we would do, typically, there's a fifteen-day public comment period on last year's results. So we're working ahead to get next year's plan done, and we're also saying, hey, here's what we did last year. So there's something called a CAPER. It's a, it's a year-end report, consolidated annual performance evaluation report for HUD. And basically, we just say, here's, here's our, here's our five-year goals that we've set, here's year three, what we met in year three, and we just break down the goals and, and kind of discuss how, how they were accomplished, if we met them, if there were any changes, what we're looking to do over the next year. From there, we approve the, the CAPER. It has to be approved forty-five days after the end of your last fiscal year. So you're doing that process as well as moving forward on the next year. October and March, as you're moving forward on next year's plan, we start doing a lot of public outreach. So at some point in time in, in October to March of this year, we'll probably come back and bother you all again and get some of your public input as to, hey, we're, we're moving forward with the next, next pot of funds, here's, here's what we'd like to do, or are we on track or, or are we missing something? And then usually, January to March, we formulate the plan, kind of bring it together in a rough draft. Usually by March, we're, again, this timeframe, we're bringing something to, to you all, we're bringing it to the Community Services Advisory Board and saying, hey, here's, here's what we've put together. Here's what we're looking to do, here's why we're looking to do it. We then follow up with council, usually middle to the end of March, there's a public hearing period that is required, it's a thirty day, and it's usually the month of April is typically when we do that. There's a public hearing with council in April and then it's approved in May. It has to be to HUD by May fifteenth, that's their, their deadline every single year. So again, you're working to get this done and then you're starting your next year's program. July one, your current year program ends June thirtieth, you do your year-end reporting, you start your next cycle of getting your plan going and, and you just kind of keep going. So right now, the current five-year plan has five priorities. And you get to kind of develop what your priorities are. HUD doesn't necessarily have a matrix of what they are. It, it comes out of your, your public outreach, some of the demographics, some of the data and so forth that you get through some of the HUD tables and some of the American Community Surveys and, and just kind of what you're doing, what, what you've got for resources and, and how you're trying to accomplish goals. But so Lakewood, in, in the last five-year plan, we stable, or sorry, we would put five goals together. Stabilize existing residents, increase rental homeownership opportunities, prevent and reduce homelessness, and kind of a large category need for accessibly, accessible culturally competent services. Again, that's just services is what it is, but it gives us a little bit more leeway. And then supporting public infrastructure improvements. So these goals, while, while they're numbered one through five, they weren't prioritized. It's just what the city needs to do and, and they were input in, in that order. So this kind of shows you the goals where we're at, starting at the start of the five-year plan in two thousand and twenty to where we are now. There's something that, you'll see numbers in there that'll say like a hundred and one points, what is it, a one hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and percent we increased. We, we had something called the, the coronavirus, y'all probably are aware of it. So we, we ended up getting ARPA funds, we ended up getting CARES funds, we ended up getting CARES two, we ended up getting CARES three. And there was, there was all of these funds that came to us. And when we put our five-year plan together, we had no idea this was gonna happen. So all of our goals are kind of skewed because what we thought we were gonna do is really not what we ended up doing. So a lot of our goals, you'll see that they're, they're excessively exceeded. Then there's a few that are a little bit short. So right now, we're looking to kind of finish out and, and meet those last few goals. So the, right now, we've got, as you can see, the, the first category would be homeowner units rehabilitated. So again, we've got a, a homeowner loan program that we do for low-income homeowners to fix their homes. Typically, we allocate about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that program and we fix eight, somewhere between eight and twelve homes for homeowners. We loan them up to sixty thousand dollars to do pretty much anything on their home to maintain it. We do a lot of roofing, we do a lot of plumbing, we do a lot of electrical painting, windows, doors, bathrooms, ADA improvements, a lot of lead-based paint removal in houses, pretty much anything under the sun. And again, those are all loans, they pay us back and then we reuse those funds into the future. So that's one of the things that we're looking to accomplish and kind of move that along. Habitat for Humanity this coming year is proposing to do an Aging in Place program where they would do the same thing. We would, we would give them monies as a grant, and then they would use them as a, a loan to homeowners that are either sixty-two or older or disabled and do improvements on their home. They would then create their own loan pool outside of our fund and just continue to reuse that for Lakewood clients in the future as well. So another way for us to get to the homeowner rebuild, rehabilitation number, once, once those two projects are done, our twenty-four will be about fifty-two, fifty-three, somewhere in that ballpark, so we'll meet, we'll meet that goal. You kind of scroll down until you get to homeowner housing added, which would be goal number two. We had a goal of thirty and we've created a whole whopping one house. That is due to the construction of affordable housing. I mean, a, a timeline for affordable housing is about five years. So what happened when the CARES, or when, when coronavirus happened is construction schedules literally went out the window. We couldn't get anything for construction products, delays for every single thing under the sun. Affordable housing was kind of put on the back burner and all these other programs came into the line. So some of the rental assistance and business assistance and all the other things that were, were kind of jumped in front of it. So some of the rental assistance and business assistance and all the other things that were were kind of jumped in front of it happened. So where we're at now is Lhasa is is getting close to starting their twenty five units of affordable rental housing. They look to start, I believe, in probably the early twenty twenty five, maybe January, February, with a twelve month timeline. So those twenty five units will be done probably in twenty, very early twenty twenty six. So we're a little bit behind where we are. And then Habitat is doing eight units of affordable housing in the Tilikum neighborhood. And four of them are finished, not yet sold, and the other four will be done probably within the next three months and then those will be sold. So we'll have nine that that Habitat will get done and then there'll be twenty five that Lhasa will get done. So we we it's hard to meet your housing added goals. You always you're always kind of chasing your tail on those. They're they're usually a four to five year cycle and and usually you're you don't quite get there. But you ultimately you do, just takes a little while. And then the last one is that we're not necessarily going to meet is number five, support public infrastructure improvements. So when we put the five year plan together, we were going to do two projects. There was a lighting project, street lighting in the Oakbrook neighborhood. So we were there's a number of streets that we were going to be adding street lighting to. Public Works had some issues with outreach and and getting to the the community to kind of understand what we were doing in that in that project. And they the public wasn't very comfortable with what was going on. There was there was some individuals out there who didn't necessarily want them, a large number of individuals who didn't want street lighting in that neighborhood. So we rethought what we were going to do, canceled that project. And we didn't have another project online other than the the other Habitat or sorry, the other infrastructure project was sidewalks. We put them on Phillips Road. So from the high school all the way up to eighty fourth, I forget, fifty ninth, I think it's the street that we put them up to. So we 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 were able to serve five thousand and and change in that neighborhood, but we weren't able to finish the street lighting project. So our goal of twenty five thousand won't be met. That's it's just one of those things. I mean, with all the CARES Act funds and all the other things that we were focusing on, it's usually something has to give. And in this case, it was infrastructure. And not looking to do infrastructure in two thousand twenty four, only because the ramp time for an infrastructure project is usually a year and a half to two years and they're fairly expensive projects. So we don't have one online that we can just kind of fall back on and and jump on another infrastructure project. So if we do, that will be in the next five year cycle. Well, I'm sure we'll have more infrastructure projects coming forward. Kind of a little interesting slide shows you CDBG from where we were when we started in two thousand to where we are. It's just a very kind of slow downhill slide. So way back in the day in in two thousand and one, we got about a million, million, well, million dollars in CDBG, pretty close, and half a million in in home and have kind of gone down from there. It's about fifty percent, forty eight percent reduction somewhere in that ballpark over the time. And then, again, you can see actual numbers where we are from two thousand to two thousand twenty three. As as I mentioned, most cities are doing infrastructure and housing. City of Lakewood is the same. So we've spent about five million dollars on infrastructure and about seven million dollars on housing. So there is included, as one of the questions you asked about program income, how where's it going? Was it come back? So in in this slide, you can see in the housing, we've got about a million dollars has come back when we've reused those for housing projects. The other big category obviously would be administration over the over the cycle, two point seven million dollars. And then at the far right are those lovely CARES Act funds. So we ended up with about a million dollars in additional funding that we that we spent through and and we helped a number of businesses. There was, I think we created thirty eight jobs. We we loaned monies to five or six other businesses. There was about, I'm trying to remember how many households we helped. It was about five hundred households and it helped over seven, I can't remember the number exactly, over seven hundred individuals that are living in those households with rent assistance, people that were that had fallen behind. Ultimately, if you you don't pay your rent, you're you're evicted. So we're able to keep those people in their households. We were able to get the monies back to the landlords. So kind of fixing the cycle a little bit. And then where we're at now, proposing allocations of, again, there's five hundred and thirty five in CDBG and two hundred and ninety in home. So what we're proposing is to spend kind of the the lion's share of CDBG funds and to get to those those housing numbers that we're trying to meet. Two hundred and fifty four thousand dollars would be for a program called Major Home Repair. Again, that's a sixty thousand dollar loan program to homeowners. There's a hundred and seven thousand dollars allocated to that's admin. The colors are so close, it's hard to tell. So a hundred and seven thousand dollars goes to administration. There's an eighty thousand dollar allocation that would go for emergency assistance for payments as emergency assistance payments program. And I'll I'll tell you what these are as 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 once we go through them. There's sixty thousand dollars for Habitat, twenty four thousand for EADR and ten thousand for our CDBG Administration of Home Housing. So Major Home Repair again is the loan program. Admin is is staff by and large. The CDBG Administration of Home Housing is a program that we use to pay for some of our staff time that that we spend on home housing projects. The the city of Lakewood gets affordable housing funds through the home program by being part of a consortium with Tacoma. And Tacoma, as part of that agreement, takes our ten percent administration. So they take the twenty nine thousand dollars. There are things that we have to do when we do a home affordable housing projects. We've got to do Davis Bacon and contracting and all kinds of different things and and this kind of picks up some of that tab. Otherwise, we don't have costs to cover those for our staff. Another thing that we do is is an EADR program. So there's actually, there's two programs on here that we're the only city in the United States that does. Every once in a while, there's there's some new programs out there, but Emergency Assistance is Emergency Assistance for Displaced Residents is a program that that we started about ten years ago. We saw a need where there was a lot of buildings being closed, so apartment buildings, single family homes, all kinds of things, whether it be a fire, whether it be an unsafe structure from our dangerous buildings or health departments. There's there's a number of things that lead to building closures, police activity, drug activity, all kinds of things. But a lot of those are in low income communities. They're they're involving people that are in low income housing. So there wasn't an avenue for us to help those people. Once you close a building down, they just became homeless. So the EADR program allows us to spend four thousand dollars in CDBG funds and we can pay for first month's rent, last month's rent, deposit, moving expenses. If they've got, some people have phone bills and utility bills and heat bills that are unpaid. And and if you're relocating them to another place, they it's another barrier for them to get into the house. They have to bring those up to to current so they can move. So we're able to help with them, pay those and get them in. The other program that that we have is the CDBG Emergency Payments. It's fairly similar. We started it about three years ago. But we use it kind of the same, but in a little different. So the EADR is taking people that are in a house now and keeping them from becoming homeless. The CDBG Emergency Payments is something that we've had a lot of requests for. We've a lot of homeless individuals. A lot of people couch surfing, there's there's all kinds of people living in cars, but they can use our funds. Again, it's a four thousand dollar program and we can pay for deposits. We can pay for moving expenses, storage expenses. Someone is living in their car, believe it or not, we can fix their car so it doesn't get towed, then they lose their house. There's there's a number of things that we use that program for and it's it's been a fairly effective program. We've been able to partner with a bunch of different service organizations and and move people from homelessness into housing. And then the last thing would be the Habitat for Humanity Aging in Place. And again, that's just a program to help either elderly or disabled homeowners. Again, it would be a loan program, fix their house and and keep it maintained. And then the home is two ninety. Again, it's affordable housing would be something that we would look to serve over the next five years. Typically, we we put our monies into a loan fund and they they build up until we can find a project that's that's feasible, that we can actually put our monies into and then partner with Pierce County and Tacoma and the state and and develop affordable housing. So that is what we're looking to bring to council on twenty fifth of this month. So this coming Monday, we're going to take this to council and go through this with council and make sure that we've hit all their targets and what what they're looking to do as well. They like input from the public. They like input from the boards. It's they like to hear, hey, we we took this to the Planning Commission. We took this to the CSAB and here's kind of what they thought. So if you have any comments or any thoughts, anything that we're either on track or not on track or things we're missing and 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 a lot of this is going to come back to you again as part of the next five year cycle. So there's going to be a a very large lift, kind of figuring out what we're going to be doing over the next five years. And to be real honest, I think tenant based rental assistance is something that's going to be coming down the pipe that we have not done. But it's it's a much, much more affordable program to spending ten point five million dollars to build twenty five units when you can spend ten point five million dollars to probably help four hundred households. So something that we're looking to change in the future.
Questions?
Yeah, I really have more of a comment. And that is that I I I'm I'm pleased to see the city make progress and in these areas, especially use these funds where I I've I'm not sure how much the city really used these funds to do these type of activities before, especially things like Aging in Place, Home Repair, those programs are great. I I think that the physical part of how of the physical building of affordable housing and the and and tenant rehabilitation, of course, is the the biggest part of this equation. But I I also think that a big chunk of the equation that doesn't get talked about as much is is entering is entering into the home buying market and the experience for a first time buyer. And because and and I say that because, you know, having been a former renter myself, you know, it's it's there are it's there are renters that don't want to rent forever. At some point, you you want to enter into the home, you want to enter into the market. And so so my comment is among on the pie chart that you have, it would, I think it would be productive for the council to consider other ways to use funds, if possible, to provide things like home buying clinics and making information available in other languages for others to to learn how to do things like take a home buying class and also tenant rehabilitation. I think there's a lot of, I think there's a lot, there's there's a lot of seniors in the community that just kind of, you know, haven't made re repairs for a long time. And so just finding resources and encouragement to be able to connect to connect to that. So as if these funds are eligible to to promote those type of activities, I I would encourage the council to to look at that. The other comment I have is not so much for the city, but just in general. In promoting things like home buying classes and 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 information, having lived in other cities, what I have experienced that is very common is partnership between between organizations, nonprofit organizations like Habitat for Humanity and Wells Fargo and Merrill Lynch. And these type of these type of public, private or partnerships that help nonprofits also from, you know, promote and encourage and provide that platform for for home buyer education. And so I think that that's where influential are our leadership in the community and organizations like the Rotary and the Kiwanis Club and their associations. And I think that that type of leadership is can can be influential and 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 encouraging these type of partnerships and formations to occur so that information can be more widely accessible, more readily available. And just the regular person on the street at any income level has fair and and adequate access to just where to start in the process.
Thank you.
Mr. Gump, so earlier you were talking about an infrastructure project that I believe it was a lighting project that the community was then asked about and they said, hey, we don't want this. Those funds were were tagged for that project and then I'm assuming pulled back and reallocated toward another effort. My question is, what would make? And this is this is backing up a little bit. There's lots of sidewalk and lighting projects currently happening. What would make one of those projects eligible for this type of a funding vehicle versus the next project that looks exactly the same? What is the delineation there?
So with CDBG infrastructure projects, they have to be in a primarily residential neighborhood and it has to be at least fifty one percent low and moderate income, the area that you're serving. So if you're doing a sidewalk project, it's got to be kind of in a, you don't want to be doing it on a busy road per se. I mean, there's the, we have a lot of busy roads that are that are primarily residential, but there's still some of our main thoroughfares. So those wouldn't qualify. So we have done over the years, a number of those. We we tended to focus in low income neighborhoods around schools. We've we've done, I think, every school district in the or every school in the city of Lakewood has a CDBG road either leading to it or around it. Lots of street lighting, a lot of sidewalks. I mean, most of those have have been tackled. We've we've kind of gotten to a point where there's not necessarily so many of them that are left. But again, it's primarily residential, fifty fifty one percent low, moderate income. And you're looking at who uses that area so or who who uses that service. So if you're building a sidewalk, again, it's people that are in that neighborhood walking. If it's on a busy road, typically you're people walking through things that aren't necessarily living in that area. So they've got to be in that area specifically that's served. That there are a few neighborhoods that are, actually, there's a lot of neighborhoods in City of Lakewood that are low income that don't have sidewalks. The the thing is, is Lakewood has a lot of sidewalks that are needed. So typically, Public Works is looking to develop kind of the 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 most used areas. So Gravelly Lake and and we just did the sidewalks out on on Washington Military. I mean, there's 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 a lot of projects going on, but they don't typically get into the smaller neighborhoods that that we focus on. In the future, that's probably going to be something that that's going to become a bigger focus for CDBG is as all those ones are done and they start coming back in and saying, okay, now we need to work in the the neighborhood over by Francis Cabrini. And I mean, there aren't any sidewalks in that neighborhood. So that would be an ideal neighborhood. There's there's a lot of them and I think that's going to be coming.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Yeah. And if if I could jump back, I mean, this table, you had some some great points. Some of the some of the things that in kind of I thought of when you were talking about in in years past, we used to have a down payment assistance program. We we went away from that only because we didn't have that many people coming in to apply. And I wish housing prices wouldn't go up as fast as they do. So we were we were spending ten thousand dollars for down payments. Well, it was five thousand originally. Houses were fairly cheap. Then it went to a ten thousand dollar program. We went up to twenty five thousand dollars. And we still couldn't get enough people to to come in and and use our funds. We were partnering with Housing, Housing Trust Fund. We were partnering with, there's a couple of different state programs. We were partnering with Habitat. And we still couldn't get most of the homeowners to a level where they could get a conventional loan because they're just, it was still the house prices were outpacing what we could do. That's maybe something that we do in the future. We do need to go back to doing some some affordable ownership classes, credit counseling, a lot of those types of things. Habitat is doing a bunch of that now. They haven't come in for funding. They did a few years back, but they haven't come in for funding for a while. Fair Housing Center is something that we'll we'll be looking to do and I need to do some of that anyway as part of our our further fair further advancing fair housing that we do. So that's something that we do. And then something that kind of jumped out at me when you when you were talking, the the homeownership rates in in the annual action plan that we put together, there's a there's a few things that kind of jump out at me. But homeownership rates in the city of Lakewood were fifty, what are we, fifty six, fifty seven percent rental occupied somewhere in that in that ballpark, which is the complete inverse of the state and Pierce County. So we're by and large renter occupied. Homeowner rates for the state, the county and the United States are about sixty four percent. If you look at ours, ours are significantly lower than that. We're obviously forty three percent. But when you look at some of the minority households, black homeownership rate is at about twenty three, twenty two or twenty three percent. If you look at Hispanic homeownership rates, it's it was somewhere, it was a little bit higher than that. I think it was about twenty six percent, somewhere in that ballpark, twenty seven percent. So minority populations tend to have very low homeownership rates in the city of Lakewood. They haven't changed since nineteen seventy. I mean, it's it's interesting looking at numbers, but all of the things that we're doing, minorities are still not buying houses in the city of Lakewood. They're not able to afford it. So we do need to do some, we've got a lot of work to do.
Mr. Combs?
I read in the Daily Journal.
I read in the Daily Daily Journal of Commerce or P G S M Business
I read in the Daily, Daily Journal of Commerce or Puget Sound Business Journal just the other day. The median home costs in Washington were six hundred grand. And Pierce County was five hundred and eighty, five seventy-nine, I think. Which blew me away. I did not think we were up that high already. But that's, that's a staggering number for anyone who is, and it, so the incomes that we just saw, there's no way someone can qualify for a loan. And one of the challenges you run into is you get upside down. The last thing you want to do is have someone have a house and foreclose on it. I mean, that's even worse than the relocation of a renter because you've got to undo an ownership. And that's a blight on, that's hard on that, that person. I, I agree with Ms. Salvo, that education component in my mind doesn't, isn't very expensive. You know, to put it together and get that information out, how do you connect it to people? I, I like the idea of the senior folks. I, I also think it would be a great thing for people in our local colleges, Pierce College, Bates, you know, the Clover Park Technical, all these colleges to have this information readily available. So it's not just, you know, the people now, but looking at the next generation. So, you know, thirty, forty years from now, we're not saying we've got the same homeownership demographic and income problem. If people know how to do it and where to get it, they can at least work towards something and maybe that'll help. I don't know for sure, but I, I would love to see homeownership go up. I just want to see it go up with people who for sure can make it. You know, the last thing you want to do is put some, set someone up to fail and give them a loan that they can't actually do anything with. So I want to see their incomes go up, but they need the information so they have a plan and potentially, you know, if it gets to a spot where we start seeing a demand for that down payment again, I'd love to see that. That would be a great program to have to have come back. That would, that would be a wonderful problem. So that's, that's all I have to add.
If I may, I think these are great points. I think it's also important to just be really good stewards of our funds. And a lot of these things are already happening in the community. We have first-time homebuyer classes. We have credit repair classes that are happening out there. I don't know that we need to duplicate them, but they're, they are important resources for the community.
How do we connect them? I guess maybe that maybe he can help with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, one more question, Mr. Gump. Is there any, has, has, has your staff or your team seen any correlation or discussion or study on from, from the educational side of things? Would it be beneficial, and, and I understand this is going to be way more macro than we're talking right here, but would it be beneficial to introduce some type of financial understanding education in our, do you think in our high school level where we're creating young adults that are hitting the workforce? I mean, can we move the needle here by addressing, you know, that issue earlier on?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a good point and, and we don't fund that. We could fund that. Some of our human services funding does some of that. There's some financial literacy things going on with human services. But yeah, that's, that's a big piece of the puzzle. I've, I've noticed there, there's, it's been in the news lately where some of the, some of the local jurisdictions are doing that now. They're looking for financial literacy in, in classes. They're requiring kids to take at least one class in that. And I, I think that's, I think that's an important thing that, that we've kind of missed. I mean, the parents aren't necessarily teaching their kids how to pay the bills and how to go get a job and how to, how to do what they used to do in, in years past when, when all of us were growing up. And I mean, my dad taught me how to do taxes. So I mean, it's, it's, there's, there's a lot of that that's missing. And I think that's, yeah, that, that's something that we need to focus on in the next five-year cycle for sure.
Mr. Gump, we've kept you here for nearly an hour and we apologize, but we appreciate all the information you have provided to us all. And we appreciate the questions from commissioners also. Thank you again and you'll be hearing from us.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Ms. Spear, we have.
Yes, we're going to try this again, Mr. Chair. My apologies for the technical difficulties first time around.
Hopefully she's still around.
But Ms. Alyssa Wilber from Ickley, we're going to give her another try. Alyssa, do you want to give a, give a shout out, see if we can hear you?
Yeah, can you hear me now? Doesn't seem like you can hear me.
Hear you, Alyssa, and I, I honestly don't know why.
Can we have her call in so we can see?
Yeah, well, what I'm going to do is send her, Alyssa, I'll send you the text of the phone number to call and we'll get you in that way by audio, okay?
Great.
So if you want to take a five-minute break?
So, okay, this. Make it five. Turn off your. Yeah.
Good.
And it's good. Yeah.